I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. The purpose of this meeting is for the committee of the whole to discuss the proposed fiscal 2021 budgets and general operations and activities of the following departments. We will start this afternoon with John Bales from the Spirit of St. Louis Airport. And then we will hear from the Department of Planning. The committee takes official notice of and admits in the evidence all St. Louis County ordinances and resolutions. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Clancy.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Present.
Councilmember Days.
Here.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Present.
Councilmember Fitch.
Present.
Councilmember Trachus. Councilmember Harder.
Present.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, I will turn it over to Mr. Bales to take us through his department's proposed budget. And I also invite him to include any of his colleagues that he deems appropriate. So, Mr. Bales, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Noted, my name's John Bales. I've been with St. Louis County for 26 years. I've been the director here at Spirit for 13. Also trying to join me on the call is Nick Degler. He's our manager administrative services. And he's the one that kind of helps put our budget together. He's basically our chief financial officer, if you will. He's having a little technical difficulties.
I'm here, John. Hey, John. I made it.
All right, you finally made it.
Good afternoon, everybody.
I'll get started and talk a little bit about the mission of Spirit of St. Louis Airport. The mission of Spirit of St. Louis Airport is to provide a safe, efficient, dependable, and attractive first cast public facility that professionally serves the users and tenants. The airport strives to maintain its role as a major air transportation facility for the St. Louis region, while continuing to be a responsive and responsible neighbor. In our core business functions, Spirit is an award-winning FAA air carrier certificated airport, meaning it has to meet all the same regulations as Lambert or JFK or anything else. We are self-supporting enterprise fund. And that's primarily based off of wholesale fuel and real estate development. We have a 7,485-foot all-weather runway, a 5,000-foot parallel runway, a precision instrument landing system for all weather conditions, FAA control tower, 24-hour United States Customs. And pre-COVID, we were getting about one international flight a day, which is very high for a business aviation airport. So, we're very proud of that. And it's key to our business. We also have 24-hour police. These are county officers. But we do pay for them. We are on a contract, just like all the munis. So, we pay the same fees as the munis do. We feel it's very important to have those officers here. And they do a tremendous job for us. Well, it is expensive, but it's well worth it to have them. So, I have to thank them a lot. We also have 24-hour aircraft rescue firefighting response service provided by Monarch. And we also have our own crash fire rescue, which all our maintenance and operations folks are trained on. And I'll talk a little bit about our strategic priorities. The department strives to support all the county executives prior priority areas, excuse me, the values of transparency, accountability, ethical standards. In Spirit, we emphasize of those the most accountability, new efficiencies, job and economic development, and regional collaboration. In those core strategies, number one for me is to keep the airport to remain self-sufficient enterprise fund. We have strong reserves. We don't have any debt, which is highly unusual for any airport in the country. Second is we are in a land acquisition program. And some of you may have seen it because you've helped me with the ordinances. But when the airport was originally purchased or opened in 1964, some of the ground was acquired through 99-year leases. We're inside of 50 years. And so, the cost of that land, the closer you go to the end of that, it gets much more expensive. And if we waited till the very end, it would cost the airport, the county, and the FAA a ton of money. So, we started this program. And we went through a condemnation situation. Came back and their side knew what we do. They came back and had numbers that would be what the ground would be if it wasn't covered. Right now, if you bought a piece of this ground, you couldn't do anything with it for another 48 years. So, that lowers the value. But as I said, every year you get closer, it gets more expensive. So, we started with acquiring the most critical pieces of ground under the runways and taxways. Second was under existing buildings. And third was raw ground. When we purchased our first parcel, because the airport is self-sufficient and has ample reserves, I was able to go out and get the obviously appraisal, negotiate the sale price. And then we were able to purchase it without bonding or mortgaging. Then I waited to get reimbursement or partial reimbursement from the FAA and MODOT. Then I took those funds and then went and renegotiated a second piece. We're about 65% to 70% way through. And those of you who've been on the council heard me say this, this is one of my top priorities. The future of the airport, financial future, is really relies on this. Also, we're going to look in it. We have been increasing our public relations activities to educate the community on what a true asset Spirit is to not only St. Louis County, but the region. Now, let's talk about why we're here, the budget overview. The 2021 budget for Spirit is $17,442,006. That's a decrease of almost $15 million or 45.9% from 2020, which was over $32 million. Of the 2021 budget, personnel costs will compromise 8.2%, which is higher than we ever, you know, when I was at $32 million, it was less than 5% for 17.6 full-time equivalents. By the way, there's over 3,000 people employed at the airport. So, I have a very lean staff that is able to maintain this facility and manage the leases. Our operating expenses account for about 85.9%. And our capital this year will only be about 6%. No doubt about it, COVID had a huge impact on business aviation, not near the impact it had on air carriers or airline service. Just to give you an example, a couple of matrix we use to judge our business model is operations and fuel sales. Fuel sales being number one. In March, when COVID hit, we were down 29%. April, we were down 71%. May was 49%. June got a little better, 28. July 16, August 20. And September's 30. But that's an anomaly. And we're really running on our true business 16% to 20%. The reason September is a little higher is because we had a gigantic airshow, if you remember last year. And during an airshow, our fuel sales for that month were artificially high. So, that's the reason we're at 30%. There's good news and bad news. The revenues are way down. Good news is our expenses are way down. And I still have had, we did a profit and loss forecast. And I still anticipate at the end of the year that we'll make over a million-dollar profit. Now, that money by FAA grant assurances law has to go back into the operation of the airport. So, that's what we use to acquire this land. It's what we use to make, we're building, we spent a million bucks on a custom facility that wasn't grant-funded. So, that's a really strong year. I was very nervous as everyone else, not knowing where we were at. But the business, we've stayed strong. I had to, I had several tenants approach me about adjusting their rents or their trouble. And I took them on a case-by-case basis. Several of them I denied. But we had three of them that absolutely made sense. One is a public events business. So, he caters and does big conventions and outdoor events. And in March, United Stateswide, actually, North America, and every single contract was canceled. But he's been a great tenant of ours. So, we gave him an abatement just to get him through. And it's going to go back to where it was once his business picks up. But it hasn't. And quite frankly, if I would have evicted him, that building would still be sitting empty. So, he's still paying the utilities, all those things. Another one was their flight school because they were hurt hard early on. And a flight school is not something that you make much of a profit on. It's more of a benefit to have. And then I had one other non-aeronautical that I adjusted the rent slightly. On one year, we canceled their existing leases. And we have a standing ordinance that allows me to enter into one-year ordinances. No more, anything more, I have to go back to the council. And the reason that was done years ago is we have over 150 teehangers. And these, I would be coming to every, I mean, I send in contracts for the teehangers. You guys get a report of all those leases according to that ordinance. But so, that's why we're doing that. As far as unfunded, you know, budget problems, we don't have any, quite frankly. One problem I have, all the departments have, and I was glad to see the county executives recommended budget had put some money for the first time in many years to look at salaries. And from my perspective, because we're so lean, number one, every year you guys ask me this, I certainly can, it wouldn't be a drop in the bucket, no matter what percentage I have people. Number two, human capital is my greatest asset. And this airport would not be successful without my staff. From my admin staff, my engineer, my maintenance and operations. I mean, I have nine maintenance and operations. And they maintain 13,000 acres, 75 pieces of very complicated equipment. Our runway system has, the taxways have over 500 lights. They run tenure regulators. They run a fuel farm. They maintain buildings just as public works do. And I have one vacant position right now. One of my longtime was eligible for retirement. And he took it because he didn't feel like he was ever going to get a raise so he could go work someplace else. I also, and I've been trying to fill this with personnel. And we've had to go through two rounds. We're probably going to be on three because I'm not getting many applicants and I'm not getting the quality. And it's simply people find out that, well, the county hasn't got a raise in so many years. And it's just, it's tough, quite frankly. And I lost my manager administrative services. We got Nick. He was, he did our budget for the budget department. She left to go to Wash U for a higher-paying job. And my accountant too left, and it's at better circumstances. So, we were fortunate enough in the accounted to, we did get Nick, as I said. We just hired a guy, an accountant too, young man, and very qualified. We're very lucky to have him. The thing attracted him to the county really is benefits. He was a contract employee. So, he's working out. So, I'm not dying like some of the departments are. But it's really, really important to us. Also, we run our budget like a private business would. I mean, we follow the regulations of the government, obviously. But if we don't, if we're having a bad year, I really scrutinize what we're going to spend our money on because the average taxpayer is not going to understand why Spirit of St. Louis, they don't understand what we are, first of all, and why we'd be getting general revenue funds, which we don't get any. The only time we ever did was in the flood of 93 from the Highway Transportation Fund, and we paid that back with interest. But we have cut some of our budgets. But there are certain things that, like, as an example, out of town travel, our budget is very minimal, $5,000. This year, we only used 500. But I put 5,000 in there. Town travel is for mandatory training, FAA training, FAA and MODOT conferences that, non-clamorous places, believe me. And we go to meet with our funding providers and let them to keep Spirit at the top of their funding list. So, I did keep that as the same. Other than that, I really don't have a whole lot more. I'd be glad to answer any questions you absolutely have. And I would encourage, we did invite the chair and a few others who came on to come out and see this facility. And what a really unique place it is. I mean, as I said, there's 3,000 people employed here, and there's over 400 million annual economic impact. Average citizen doesn't know that. You know, we're growing businesses. We, in the last year, we had one tenant, existing maintenance tenant, built a 45,000-square-foot maintenance hangar, new and created probably 100 jobs. Nestle Perina, which is an existing flight department, you guys just approved an ordinance for that lease several months back. And that was, the county, it was built in 1968, needed a ton of work. And Nestle, we negotiated a lease and they came in. I gave them a long-term lease, but they're putting a one-and-a-half million dollars into a county facility. They updated the roof, updated the flooring, the fire system. So, our relations with our tenants is still good. But if, I encourage you all, I mean, to come out and visit the facility once COVID gets through. We also partner with the St. Louis County Metro Helicopter Unit. We work closely with them. So, if there's any questions I could answer or anything I missed or you'd like me to touch on, I'd be glad to.
Thank you, Mr. Bales. And I, yes, I was, I appreciated the invitation to come out and see you all. I think I was scheduling that when the pandemic changed everything, but it's still on my list when it's safe to do so. Any questions or comments for Mr. Bales from the council?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilman Fitch.
Thank you. Hey, John. I'm out there about once a month, so I'm there a lot. The other thing, and I have no questions about your budget. I think it's pretty self-explanatory, just a suggestion. A lot of people, believe it or not, they don't know that that airport's owned by St. Louis County. And that's got me to think in the last several times I've been out there is there are signs everywhere of Spirit of St. Louis Airport. There's no signage that I've seen that say St. Louis County owns it. You know, like we have the county, I always think of branding, the county emblem on all of our other county facilities and all that. Is that something that you guys have looked at? Or I realize you don't have a lot of money to spend on things like that. But I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, we're going to do that. We also, I think that's a great idea, doing that. Because I do get people that don't know, it is prominent on our website, if you go to our website. And we actually have a project coming up next year, a signage project. So, what we'll do is we'll just add that to the signage. You know, we have the directional signs that say different businesses. We could just put right next to, at the top, it says Spirit. We could just put St. Louis County logo on there also. I'd be glad to do that. That's a great idea.
Thank you. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Yes, Councilman Harder.
Hey, John. Big decrease in your budget because of fuel sales? Is that because of price per gallon or just the demand for fuel sales that is driving that budget down?
A little bit of both, but primarily the volumes. Corporations just aren't flying as much. I mean, like I said, it's not hard to hit at the airline. But year-to-date, right now, we're down about 1.5 million. We're anticipating being down 1.8 million. So, when you look at the price of buying 1.8 billion extra gallons of gas, that pushes your budget up. Also, the price fluctuations. I mean, you know, we've got this Hurricane Delta coming up through the Gulf Coast. If it hits, you know, some of the oil refineries, our prices could go through the roof. And I don't know if anybody on this council has been here, but twice I had to come back for special appropriations for fuel. And don't like to do that. And I always joke, but I'm pretty serious, is if I could forecast the price of fuel, I wouldn't be working for St. Louis County. I would be in the fuel business. But with that said, one year, we had, I think I had to, I think it was Katrina possibly, or maybe the BP oil disaster. So, the prices shot through the roof. We didn't anticipate that. And the other time we did it was, it's a good problem because we sold a heck of a lot more fuel than we thought we were going to. And as I said earlier, fuel is one of our revenue sources, but it's also our greatest expense. That's why last year, I, for a little department, had a third, $2 million budget.
And fuels have been at historic lows for jet fuel, right around when the sales bottomed out. So, around April, May, June, our fuel sales were low and the price per gallon was very, very low historically.
Okay, so you got volume and price hit you hard. Are there any things that you can think of that we could be doing to make money that we haven't been making money there in the airport to help get that number up? Is there any other services or anything we could be doing to get the volume up?
No, and I appreciate that, that point. You know, we, all of our real estate is leased. We negotiate very consistent, very good leases. And from the fuel, it's, it seems counterintuitive. But our profit isn't necessarily always driven by volume. You know, the way we do it was first in, last out. When there's fuel price changes, the county does really well on that. In fact, when the prices got really high in the recession with the fuel, I mean, our model, accounting models, it's supposed to capitalize on small price changes. But there was a time there when we were seeing huge price swings. But you know, like I said, we're looking at about a million-dollar profit this year. And that's fairly average. I mean, the years that we're really down is when we have gigantic projects. You know, because a lot of our grant projects, we have to pay for upfront, and then we get reimbursed later from the FAA. But like, when I do the land acquisition, it was a couple of years ago, on paper, it showed we lost money. But then the next year, we made two and a half million because I got that reimbursement back from the FAA. Our reserves, FAA requires airports to be as self-sustaining as possible. But they can't have too much excess. And we, quite frankly, have probably one of the strongest balance sheets of any airport in the country. You know, we're not talking, you know, Lambert has hundreds of millions of dollars, but then they have this huge debt service. We could operate for several years without making a penny. So, I'm very proud of that. But I, we are always looking at ways to, and I also look at it as my tenants, if our tenants aren't successful, the airport's not going to be successful. And you know, there's a lot of capacity in St. Louis market. And you know, you start trying to gouge people, one, against FAA rules, but two, you can run business off. So, but we look at all opportunities we absolutely can to maximize our profit. And when we do come up with new creative ideas, we'll put them into place. You know, we're adding a revenue source with our customs. That's not why it's there. The customs is there to keep businesses that could go to other airports, and then I would lose my tenants and then my real estate leases. But we're going to, we're sending back some of the expense of the customs to, we don't get charged for customs, but there's international trash and a bunch of things like that. And then if I could change the subject and then go back to that, on the airshow, we're looking, we'll find out in December if we're going to have an airshow in 2022. And for all the new council members, you should know that the airshow is a 501(c)(3) and not run directly by the county, even though I'm the president of it. And that is to protect the county from exposure and liability and the airport. The other thing it does is you can imagine, when you have an event like that, you've got to procure hundreds of toilets, tents, all kinds of things, which would never be able to get done in our procurement system. So, it is a 501(c)(3). And that also allows donors to make donations that are, help with the taxes situation.
Okay. And finally, how many empty hangar, hangars do you have that are not leased at this?
Zero. Zero.
So, everything's full?
Everything, every office space is full, every hangar is full.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question, please?
Yes, go ahead, Councilwoman Days.
Thank you. I'm glad, because that was a question I wanted to ask about the tenants and how many tenants do you have totally?
We have over, there's 3,000 people employed here, but we have over 150 leases. Some of those are aeronautical and some of those are non-aeronautical. We have an office complex that, we've got a VIP corporate housing. We've got a global importer in there. We've got a promotions company. So, that is that one. And then we also have tenants like corporate flight departments, flight schools, and then various other types of aviation businesses. But we have a tremendous number. Now, on the leases, don't quote me at 150. I can send you that number, the number of actual leases we have. But it's got to be pushing 150.
Okay. And how do you determine, or what determines the amount of that lease? How do you determine that?
Well, the simple things like a teehanger. A teehanger is a little T-shaped hangar where you, if you own an airplane, would park it, like a boat slip. You know, that's driven off market, supply and demand. If we charge too much, we'll have a bunch of empty hangars. They'll go to other airports. We don't have a strong, a horribly long waiting list. So, we adjust those rents every year. For non-aeronautical tenants, the FAA requires us as grant assurance to get fair market value. So, I look at what other equivalent space in Chesterfield Valley is going for and lease that. I mean, I'm not going to get Clayton Class A rents, but I'm going to get what we're getting in Chesterfield. The aeronautical rents, the FAA gives us some leeway because if the tenant brings an added benefit, that goes into figuring out, you know, if I, if I brought in a business, let's say, they were going to manufacture airplanes and bring 1,000 jobs to Chesterfield Valley, I would give them a better rent than I would somebody that I've got five of those existing businesses that don't employ anybody because of the airport's real, true jobs, economic job, economic development, job creation. But we are required by the FAA to file, to get fair, fair market value and be consistent with our tenants. I cannot, I cannot, nor is it morally correct, to offer one person a different rent than I will offer somebody else for the same space. So, we're very, I make a real good point because everything's public, that when I negotiate a lease, I am extremely consistent. We look at square footage for hangars. And then there's, there's other people on the airport, private tenants, that lease space out too. So, I have to look at what the market is. And I don't want to offside the market. I want us all to be consistent. As I said, if our tenants are successful, I'm not successful. So, real estate, early on, when I first started, fuel sales were a majority, probably 70% of our revenue in real estate was about 30. That's kind of flip-flopped. And that's a good one because when we have situations like COVID or the oil spill, the fuel market is not always going to be steady. People are always going to pay the rent. And I did not have one single tenant go out of business this year. And every office space and teehanger I have is full.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anyone else? Mr. Bales, I noticed that there is a, about a $15 million decrease between what you all requested and what the county executive has recommended?
Two, two things.
Chair, I'm not sure, you're having an echo. I don't know if you.
Yeah, let me put my headphones on and see if that helps.
Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
So, that, that is twofold. The county executive did not cut anything. Number one, we came back and looked at our business model, where we're at and what we were going to do. And quite frankly, number two is Nick, our manager administrative services who put the budget together, he started right when the COVID happened. And so, he was kind of getting trained on his own because I'm a business person. I'm not an accountant. And so, he used those last numbers and he submitted them to the budget department. And then we readjusted that. So, the numbers of the county executive, we sent those back in to the budget department, telling Paul that, hey, we made a mistake. But Paul said, made it clear, he said, well, the council doesn't want us changing stuff because it seems like maybe somebody's playing games. So, we did readjust that and we sent those numbers, but he didn't print those numbers as our actual. So, the county executive's numbers are correct. And it was based.
Oh, I'm still echoing. I don't know what's going on with that. Is this better? Okay. So, then, Mr. Bales, the recommendation for FY '21 for your department is $17,442,983. You, that is something that you all can, can live with and do okay with for the next year?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, you know, I, I do not, Madam Chair, the only thing that would change where I come in, I don't like over-budget stuff either. But if the, you know, we got a miracle shot and the businesses came back. But I still don't see the business coming back to where it was until 2022. God help us if we have a cure. The other thing, though, I point out, business aviation, when September 11th happened, it hurt the airline business, but business aviation actually did well because people didn't want to put employees through the security lines. They felt dangerous. I think COVID, in the long run, may help us even more. To go back to Councilman Harder's point, because there are companies that are going to go farther down the food chain to put people on airplanes. And airplanes don't make money unless they're flying. You know, we don't see any many luxury flying, but the businesses right now are still fairly quarantined. And our international traffic is way off, but I expect that to come back. And your original question, I waved from, but yes, that budget is correct. That was on us in the beginning. You know, as I said. You know, as I said, we had a brand new person that hadn't done it. And so he was basing the numbers off historical, which normally you're, they would, that would have been correct. But we, we looked at that, saw that and called the budget office and said, no, 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 this is, we gotta change that. But, and I asked Paul why I was still in there and he just said, you know, that you guys did want to see what we originally sent in. So that's what it is.
Got it. Oh, the echo's back. Sorry about that, everyone. Um, what, who are the types of people that, that typically travel in and out of Spirit of St. Louis Airport? Are we talking, are these private flights, chartered flights, business? What, what sets you all apart from those that fly out of Lambert?
All of the above. Originally, some of the corporations, Anheuser Busch, back when it was in the day, they were, they had a huge flight department. And they moved from Lambert because Lambert is crowded. And the efficiency of business aviation is you get in, you get on the plane, you take off, time's money. That's not the case now. But Lambert has less business aviation than us because they have more restrictions. They're focused on the air carriers. They don't have this, their, their fixed base operator who sells gas is, is more expensive. But we have charter flights, we have medical life flights, we have probably three or four ambulances a week, either with organ donations or critical life flights coming in here. We have a major one of those. A lot of corporations, small corporations may only have one airplane. Because not only they can get to places, if they have factories in rural towns that have small airports, you know, you can't fly into those places. They also, the benefit is you can fly, you could take, let's say, let's say, the council is a business team. We could take everybody on a business trip and make four stops in one day, not put anybody up in a hotel, not have to feed them extra, you know, they're not, and it's a benefit for them because they're not away from their employees. They can go at last minute. We also have a lot of law enforcement here. Not only St. Louis County Metro Support, but we have the D E A, you know, Drug Enforcement Administration and others. And then we have flight schools, the charter companies. We don't have any airline service, nor are we really particularly interested in airline service. We do cargo. We do a lot of on time cargo. Right now it's for the G M Wetzel plant. We also, in COVID, we picked up, because airlines were not flying and we picked up some cargo that people, strangely enough, buy dogs online, high end breeds, and they're flying them out of here on airplanes. So we have what we call the puppy flights every morning and they're going to people that spend a lot of money on dogs. And, and so it's, it's every variety that you can imagine. A business aviation is truly anything but military or air carrier. And by the way, we do get a lot of military because one of our fixed base operators that sells gas, we're the wholesaler, but they're the retailer. And the reason we're the wholesaler is because I didn't start that, my predecessor did, but it ensures that everybody on this airport has the same quality of fuel. And we get a lot of benefits from Phillips, anything we do in marketing. For example, if I put a sign up like Councilman Fitch asked, if I put the logo, Phillips logo right below the county, they're going to pay for 50% of it. So it's a great relationship. They provide all of our training. So that, that in itself is good. And then, and we do a lot of, not just the medical true life lights, but a lot of like quest diagnosis stuff. We're getting that stuff. That goes at night. We don't have a lot of flights, which good, keeps my noise complaints down. So we have everything in the military contract. Basically, the tenant goes and bids on a military contract, gives them a price, fixed price of what the market's going to be. And our fuel probably would have been down even more in this COVID, but we've, we see a tremendous F 18s Navy fighters, they're going from ship to home in California. Or if they've been out sea for four months and people say, why don't they stop at Scott Air Force Base? They stop at Scott Air Force Base, one is an air force base, not a navy, and they're going to be there for four hours. The private sector here runs it. They usually have Chick-fil-A waiting for them and they gas and go and get them out in 30 minutes. And so these guys and ladies can get home. Or they're going to West Coast to train and those airplanes, the Midwest is the perfect stopping point. So that's really helped our fuel sales too. I can't hear, I can't hear the chair.
Thank you for that information, Mr. Bales. I think that's really helpful for people to understand that you're not just another airport in St. Louis. You're, you're providing some clear value propositions here. Any other questions or anything?
Madam Chair, one, one other question.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Bales, earlier, you mentioned the expensive security that you do have the county police out there. What are your security issues that you need to have, you know, I guess, so many officers?
I, I only have five officers. But most general aviation airports don't. After September 11th, we got a call from the county executive Westfall at the time because he was getting calls from businesses, you know, corporate operators. So I wrote a business plan based off of other airports and, and, and I'm not trying to pat myself on the back, but it was used as a national model. And we find things, we'd rather be proactive than reactive because then the F, the F A does not provide a whole lot of security money. So what my, the officers I have are usually more senior officers. I don't need a young, you know, it's not, these guys on on foot, they visit every single tenant. They've resolved a lot of issues. As any other county department, public places sometimes attract not so well people. We've had several people with issues and they want to come out and get on an airplane. We also have, they do security patrol at night, airport inspections after bad weather when none of the, and it allows me not to have a maintenance person here overnight. So they provide a great asset. And I went to our tenants and said, because first of all, we pay the contract that, that, that every, the unions pay. But we split that cost with our tenants. We had a surcharge on our fuel. And we went to them afterwards, after a couple of years and said, look, do you still want to do this? And every one of them to a person said, yes, they, they feel very good about having real police officers here. So I would argue that they are, that's an expense that I have, but it's, it's probably would be one of the last ones I'd want to give up. It gives me a lot of security knowing they're here. And they also have been great. Their sergeant allows me to do a lot of training with them. So they also respond and been trained to respond to airport emergencies. So if there's, you know, I've got somebody here 24 hours a day. So they're a great value to me.
Yeah, that's fine. I just looked at where your airport is and, you know, it's not like somebody's going to just be walking by, but maybe they do out there in that area. That's not, that's not my area. All right. So thank you for that kind. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Anything else for Mr. Bales? All right. With that, we do have another department to hear. Are the folks from Department of Planning available?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Yes.
I do not, I do not think you can start that meeting till four. It was posted for four o'clock.
Ah, okay.
Is that correct? Is that correct, Kyle? I, I'm pretty sure that if it's posted at a certain time.
I understand what you're saying. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So then with that, we have about 20, a little over 20 minutes. I would like to make a motion that we recess until 4 P M.
Madam Chair, can I say something?
Yes.
I just want you all to know that we really appreciate your support and appreciate what you guys do for the county and the citizens. And if you ever have any questions, when you see some of my, you know, something I send in, Councilman Harder does because I'm in his district. But if you ever have any questions, please don't hesitate to contact me. I'm never going to send you anything that I would not stand up for myself. So I appreciate your support.
Thank you, Mr. Bales. We do appreciate you coming this afternoon to take us through your budget request and to share a little bit more about the cool things that are happening at the Spirit of St. Louis Airport. So with that, there is a motion on the floor to recess until 4 P M. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, we will stand for recess until 4 P M. All right, it is 4 P M. We will now reconvene the committee of the whole for the purposes of discussing the proposed fiscal year 2021 budget, general operations and activities of the Department of Planning at this time. So at this moment, I would like to turn it over to Director Gail Shote from the Department of Planning. Gail, please share with us your budget request and feel free to tag in any of your colleagues as necessary. I turn it over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa, and welcome. And good afternoon, everybody. My name is Gail Shote, Acting Director of the Department of Planning. Our mission at the Planning Department is to guide development and redevelopment to create desirable and connected communities. We do this in a variety of ways, but basically through the regulation of land use, we administer both the zoning and the subdivision ordinance for unincorporated St. Louis County. We staff both the Planning Commission and the Board of Zoning Adjustment. We review plans and Platts for new development and redevelopment. And we also are the county's liaison to the St. Louis County Boundary Commission, where we monitor annexation proposals and any sorts of boundary changes. We do strive to support the administration's strategic priorities, in particular, regional collaboration, customer friendly government, and then promoting jobs and economic development. We do pride ourselves as Planning Department with our culture of helpfulness, responsiveness, and kind of our orientation to resolve and or solve problems collaboratively, both internally with departments and externally outside county government. Our 2021 budget highlights, our total recommended appropriation is $1,128,306. That represents an increase from 2020, about 13%, $134,000, give or take. This increase is primarily because of the loss of reimbursement of, of about $130,000 or so from the Office of Community Development due to their transfer to the Department of Human Resources. I think you'll recall that O C D was transferred to Human Resources earlier this year. We are a very, very small department, as you're aware, as you can see. We have a total of 12 positions. One year ago, we had 40, four zero positions. But again, with the transfer of Office of Community Development to Human Services, excuse me, and then also Strategy and Innovation being reorganized into the Performance and Performance Management and Budget Department. So that brings us down to 12 employees, 10 of which are in planning, nine of which the positions are filled. There is one vacancy, which is the Director of Planning. Of those nine positions, we have five professional planners, all with master's degrees in planning or related field and additional administrative staff. We are experienced, we are competent, and we are professional. But with that experience comes the potential for the loss of institutional knowledge. Of those nine positions, of those nine employees, six are eligible for retirement, two thirds of our staff. I have been here for 35 years. I'm one of many of those six. During the pandemic, I would like to certainly give a shout out to my staff. Every day, we had a professional planner and administrative staff in this office providing services. There were no services that were dropped. There were no services that were omitted. We did pause a little bit on our Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Adjustment meetings until we kind of became more familiar with the Webex platform and we established those, those meetings online, similar to the council. We fielded many, many calls from various departments, trying to help out where we could with regard to how do you file a record plat? How do we get addresses for our property? What about building permits? In addition to the regular planning calls. We also volunteered to help with customer service on the street level when that reopened in July. In addition to working here in the office, obviously, we worked remotely and our, our capabilities have been improving. We've, we've increased scanning of our files. We, we are rich with paper, paper copies of files in our office, lots of plans, lots of reports. And we, we have been slow at scanning those documents, so it's more easily retrievable, retrievable on our computers. And we also have been allowing electronics transmission of plans. So that's easier for both the public to submit those documents and for us to review and disseminate across county government and other agencies. But again, a lot of our resources are still in the office, a lot of our paper files. We have historic zoning and subdivision files that go back to 1965. And from 1965 to 2000, they're on microfilm. And our microfilm viewer and machine is, you can no longer make a copy of that information unless, you know, you use your phone or something like that. But, and it's very expensive to replace that machine. So we, we have not chosen to, to have that as, as one of our costs. But overall, we have stopped, you know, new microfilming and we have been doing digital scanning. But we do have a slight backlog of cases that we do send out to the record center kind of on a, on a periodic basis. Also during the pandemic, we, to try to help businesses either stay open or reopen, we relaxed some of our rules. We gave more flexibility to some of our deadline thresholds. We increased the available time to get permits after you get a B Z A variance in the past. You had six months to, to try to work through your, your permitting side of things and we, we gave a lot, additional flexibility there. Again, we started to accept plans electronically. We've allowed a lot more flexibility with outdoor seating and temporary signs for restaurants and other types of uses like that. And we made it very easy for outdoor drive-through testing sites, especially COVID testing. In the future, we do, we have been very, we have felt we've been very successful with our Webex public hearings and meetings. We allow the public to formally comment. And then they could certainly attend from their location of choice, whether it's at their home or their office. And we can easily, it's made us, it's made it very easy to schedule our B Z A and Planning Commission meetings. And when we want to continue that option in the future, when we do reopen back to the public and have our meetings back in the council chambers, we want to still have that option so that people don't have to necessarily come into Clayton. They can still participate in our meeting and, and listen and hear what the, what the decisions are made. I know that in the past at these meetings, there's been a concern with, you know, there's not much land left in the county. What is the Planning Department really going to be focusing on? But, you know, we, we are, we represent one third of the population in the county and one third of the land area. So there, there really are still opportunities out there. Some of the most prime tracks of ground are not available, but that zoo property is still up there in, in North County and they have to go through a zoning case. We do have some large scale department store sites, some vacant K Mart's and, and the like in unincorporated county. We even have a couple of, you know, large scale office campuses that, that might, you know, be available for redevelopment. We weren't expecting unused cemetery spaces being out there for residential style development, but we have had a few instances with, with excess cemetery property. And also we're certainly still in that five year cycle where annexations and boundary issues can come before the Boundary Commission. So those are still things that we look forward to in 2021 and that will, will certainly keep us busy. That's all I really have formally presented. I'm open for questions and comments and anything else?
Thank you very much, Gail, for that, those remarks. Any questions or comments from the council? Going once, Councilwoman Days, go ahead.
I have none, Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I have none.
Oh, done. Okay. Well, wow. Well, I look forward and I continue to look forward to working with all of you. I, I, I do cherish that. And we are steadfastly keeping up our pace. So anytime, and you all know, feel free to call me.
Madam Chair, if I may, please?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Gail, thank you for coming today. I do have perhaps one or two questions. Looking at your proposed budget, I note that your department, with respect to salaries and wages, requested $708,097, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, or $100,000, I suppose, anyway. And then that was increased by the administration?
Right, that, yes.
And I'm assuming based on earlier testimony at the prior hearing, that that's for raises?
Correct.
Right. But at least prior to that, the folks in your department were able to do their part, given the crisis we're under and take significantly less than the $726,000, by about almost $18,000, it looks like. Maybe a little more than that. Is that right?
I'm not understanding your question, no.
Well, I guess my question is, if I'm reading it right, you guys requested $708,097 in salaries and wages.
Oh, yes, yes.
The county executive has recommended that we approve $726,255.
Yes.
I understand and certainly appreciate that county employees are long overdue for raises. I'm not making an issue with that. All I'm saying is that at least in terms of what you were asked to do by the executive in terms of finding savings, you guys were prepared to come in with at least even less than, than you received last year in your salaries and wages, right?
Yes.
Okay. I definitely appreciate your, your effort there. I just wanted to point that out and we'll see what we do with it going forward. But thank you, that's all I have, Madam Chair.
I did want to point out one thing, that salaries out of our budget represent 91% of our budget. And I know that, you know, that is, is high compared to some departments, but we don't have equipment. We don't have vehicles, that type of thing. We, we are primarily personnel.
I understand and Mr. Crowder made that perfectly clear. It's not just your department, there are others. But, and as you said, I'm not making light of what you do or the fact that raises are long overdue. I just was pointing out that at least in terms of what you were asked to do, you guys did find savings and that's something we'll, we'll deal with going forward. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anyone else? All right, I am not hearing any further comment or discussion for the Department of Planning. Diane, do we have any public comments this afternoon?
No, we do not, Madam Chair.
All right, well, thank you again, Gail, for your presentation. We appreciate all the work that you do. I'm very impressed that you all were able to maintain some workflows throughout COVID and have someone here so that balls, important balls didn't get dropped along the way. You all do really important work for St. Louis County. So thank you again. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Sir, a second? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.